To you.
Oh, okay.
And we'll get that to you.
Okay.
We've been using our county one. And then he just brings it, uh, brings the recorder back and I do the minutes and send them to you.
Okay.
And I've been sending to Sandy and Laura because they've been go-to until you came, so.
Yeah.
Probably just until you tell me different, just send the draft ones to all three of you.
Okay, yeah, no, that works.
Anything changes, you can just let me know.
Okay, yeah, they looked great, so I appreciated that.
Oh, yeah.
I missed part of the meeting, so.
Yeah, you had to leave, so.
Campaign finance.
If anyone wanted to check out the meetings, we live stream on YouTube.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Oh, fun, okay.
Supposed to be full term.
She's pretty long on in DC circles.
Jessica Green?
Yes, from Northland Securities.
Oh, she's attending that one.
Yep, virtually, yep.
You know who's got a lot of signs up in RA is that Wilson for Mcleod's.
Oh, really?
But I don't think, you know, he can't win with just this part of the town.
It's the, it's the, I kind of noticed that at home. Only got one. Okay. Wonder what it was. I only hear the half of one here, okay. It's nine o'clock, we've called the meeting to order, we'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
For the Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please read the roll?
Here.
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 Again, the first item we have is to approve or amend the agenda, we have any additions or deletions?
No, sir, we have no changes.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion second approve the agenda, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried, carried agenda is adopted. I don't think anyone was back to an open forum, were they? I didn't, nope.
Doesn't look like it, no.
Nope, nobody here, so, okay. Under the consent agenda, item number one, approve or amend the regular meeting minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Accept and file administrator's report for monthly financial report, item two. Item three, accept and file veteran service officer quarterly report. Item four, reappoint George Feeler as county veteran service officer to a four-year term from June sixth, twenty twenty to June fifth, twenty twenty-four. Item five, approve amendment number one to service contract with Service Master Professional Services of St. Cloud for provision of cleaning services for Benton County government buildings, extending the contract to cover one additional year. Item six, approve renewal application for on-off and Sunday liquor, on, on sale and Sunday sale liquor for Oak Hill Golf Club, eighty-eight fifty-two Indian Road Northwest, South Rapids, for the period October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty to October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. Item seven, approve application for exempt permit for Dualm Area Lions to conduct a raffle, bingo and tip boards to be held at Jack and Jim's Convention Center, one one zero two five Dualm Road Northeast Foley on November fourteenth, twenty twenty. Any members want any of these items pulled for further discussion? If not, a motion will be in order to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion is carried and the consent agenda is adopted. Next item, Monty Headley, county administrator, for an introduction.
Let's bring Amanda on up to the podium.
Good morning, Chair, members of the county commissioners. My name is Amanda Oathout, I'm the new executive director for Benton Economic Partnership. I want to thank you first of all for inviting me to your board meeting this morning. I really appreciate it, everybody's been very welcoming as I start my new role at Benton Economic Partnership, so. I wanted to provide a little bit of background on me, my education and experience, so you get to know me a little bit better. Feel free to ask any questions, and then I'm going to roll into some of the things that I've been doing for the Benton Economic Partnership, and then talk a little bit about the CARES grants as well. So, just a little bit of background on myself, I am formerly the Economic Development Director for the city of Elk River. I worked for the city for just over five years and I managed the Housing and Redevelopment Authority for the city and also the Economic Development Authority for the city. And in that role, I also facilitated several different subcommittees, you know, on behalf of the HRA and the EDA and facilitated a lot of different projects for the city. And some of those projects, you know, involve tax increment financing and tax abatement, economic development related projects, housing and housing projects, affordable housing projects and redevelopment. So those were my primary focuses and keys as I worked for the city of Elk River. My education, I have a bachelor's degree in planning and community development from St. Cloud State University. I double-minored in heritage preservation and economics. I have a real estate background, and then I also worked for a period of time for a private developer out of St. Cloud. So I have kind of a well-rounded experience over the past few years and which enables me to really complement some of the skills and abilities that BEP was looking for when they hired me. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of information on that, and then also I am a resident of Benton County. I grew up here, lived on a dairy farm just five miles out of town. So I really truly value dedicate, hard work and dedication that it takes to, you know, be successful. And, and a lot of that has transpired into my current work. So, and so I open up for any questions that you may have on my background, otherwise I'm going to roll into some of the things that I'm tasked to do with BEP.
Any questions for anyone?
Just happy to have you aboard.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. First of all, I want to say, I want to give a very warm thank you to Monty and Vicky. They've been extraordinarily helpful as I have been on-boarded with BEP, so thank you very much, I really do appreciate it because it really helps me get my, you know, feet in the, in the door and, and hit the ground running, so I appreciate that. So I'm going to roll into a little bit about some of the things that were tasked to do with BEP and my role here at the county. So BEP and Economic Development Partnership, we are going to focus primarily on economic development-related activities within the county and then also, you know, work with our, you know, cities and our townships and, of course, the county on any development or redevelopment opportunities that may exist in the county. So that is kind of my forefront as I, as I move forward with this position. And then also, as of recently, I've been administering the CARES grant program that the county graciously allocated funds to local businesses to help them with some of their struggles over the past few months due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So I wanted to give you some statistics on that, and I do have a request for the board, but I wanted to give you an update on where we're at to date. So over the past month, I've been reviewing applications that have been coming in for, for the grants and we received, BP has received sixty-seven grants to date. The original allocation that the county administered for the program was sixty-six, sixty-seven, I'm sorry, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars less the administration cost for the, for the program. And the total number of requests that we've received of the sixty-seven applications, the total amount requested was eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. So we had a very, very good turnout, and I truly believe after reviewing the forty-five applications that I've reviewed to date, I can wholeheartedly tell you that there's businesses that are really struggling and are in need of the grant funds. So I appreciate the board for considering the allocation of grant funding from your CARES allocation to the county. So, you know, taking into account the total dollar amount for, you know, administration of the program and the total requests to date, it leaves us with an unmet need of approximately a hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars to cover all the grant requests to date. And that's taking into consideration a hundred percent of the grants being approved, right? But however, not all grant applications would be approved. There's going to be some that don't necessarily qualify under your criteria, which I estimate roughly, at this point, I estimate roughly five to six applications at this point won't be approved because they don't meet the criteria. So that, you know, if we take six applications, multiplying that by the average grant amount about twelve thousand, nine hundred, thirteen thousand dollars, we come up with about seventy-eight thousand dollars, which wouldn't necessarily be allocated or needed for the program. So we're, you know, deducting that amount from the total request that BEP, BEP is asking for. It would leave us with a bare minimum of a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars that I would request from the board. However, I want to add a buffer in there in the event that we have, you know, request that total, the fifteen thousand dollars, just so that we're covering all of our bases and we can, you know, get that money out the door. So BP would respectfully request from the board a new allocation of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to fund the applications that are received to date. And I open it up for any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So with this funding, we have up to fifteen thousand dollars per application. What percentage are we giving to them of their, off their losses? And I don't know if I put that correctly.
Yeah, no, I actually, Commissioner Heinand, I did calculate that information for you based upon each application because each application is different.
Yep.
So the county board, when we go for a request for approval, I'm hoping that the first round of requests will be on the twentieth of this month, and I have those totals per application. So I've calculated, I mean, I'm seeing anywhere from seven percent to upwards of fifteen percent. So I mean, it all depends on the application and the request amount, but I did calculate that for you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Chair, so you said you had six of them that you don't think should, there'll probably be, and you're only about, what, halfway through there, two-thirds of the way through, so you're probably going to have ten or something that, if.
Potentially.
Yeah, so you've, you've calculated that into the other, or not?
I haven't really calculated all of that, I'm kind of estimating at this point, just based upon the applications that I'm receiving to date. Roughly six, but there may be a few more. Yep.
And that, the application process closed here?
The application process did close as of the thirtieth of September.
Okay. Any other questions?
Let me ask another question. Do you think it's, you think there's a need to have another round for some of those same people?
If they don't get some more, they're not going to make it to the end of the year? Or doesn't, doesn't your application process reveal that the magnitude of the stress?
I can, I can see the magnitude of the stress through their profit and loss statements. So I can see that there's businesses that are completely struggling.
So fifteen thousand might be pretty inadequate for some businesses.
For some, yep, absolutely. But I think, you know, if, if we were to, you know, I'm not sure that we would open, be able to open it up and receive more applications. You know, I'm really not sure because I, you know, I've been kind of gauging that over the last few days by phone calls, emails, you know, requesting that the application is open, and I haven't received any of that. They've had six weeks to submit an application, and we got a push at the end of twelve applications at that, that last day. So I know that there is a need out there, I know the businesses are struggling and we, we can see that. And it definitely would be, it definitely shows through the application process.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yep, Steve, go ahead.
So Amanda, with the request of what you're asking for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars more, would that give all the applicants relief funding then?
It would cover the requests that we have to date.
All the requests to date, okay.
And if we, you know, I just, like I said, I don't know if it would, if it would be as successful if we were to open it up again for a couple of weeks. You know, I've been thinking about that, and I think it would, we could measure success a little bit better by giving relief to the businesses that have already provided that application.
I'd have to agree with you on that, too.
Okay, anyone else? All right. That is, I think that's, we're going to be doing some big discussion on this tomorrow at a committee at the hall. Is Amanda going to be here or we don't?
Welcome, if you can, if you have time.
Nine, okay, tomorrow morning.
Yeah, yeah.
I certainly can.
I'm sure we're going to have some other questions, yeah, about this, yeah. We're going to try and make some, come to some consensus tomorrow on a lot of this funding because we're starting to run out of time.
Oh, to be in here, okay.
Yeah.
I guess from, from the board's standpoint, I would, I would appreciate if you'd be here because evidently you've got way more knowledge than we do.
I don't know about that, but thank you for the compliment.
Okay.
That's why we gave them the money for the funding, right?
Right. But yeah, I would, I would definitely appreciate being here.
Good, good.
Final question.
Yes.
Do you feel comfortable making a decision or this committee is, you're going to review it with this committee that's set up? You know, it's a lot of responsibility to do this, you feel okay doing, leading this process of decide who gets it, who doesn't get it?
With the criteria that BEP and the county put in place, absolutely, one hundred percent. There are some applications that I would respectfully request BEP look at further because there are, you know, some, some applications that I have questions on, but overall, I absolutely, one hundred percent feel confident.
And the board members of BEP now have liability insurance, so we should be all right. All right, Ed, you got it.
So you're talking about BEP, the committee that we set up to review these would, and then they bring out a recommendation back to the BEP board?
Correct. So, so basically, I believe the process would be that the executive committee would review all the applications that, that I have reviewed and, and then there's a, a large portion of them that would, you know, I would wholeheartedly recommend approval, there's some applications I would wholeheartedly recommend denial, and then there's some applications in between, and some of those applications in between, I would like the BEP executive committee to review those in a little bit more detail and, you know, help, help me with that process.
Sounds like we got a plan, yeah.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Okay, well, thank you, yeah, yeah, welcome again to Benton County, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay. Next up, we have, oh, somebody on the, Jessica Green here.
Be a go-to, can you unmute yourself and? So folks, it's Jessica Green from Northland Securities, so Jessica, we'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chair, can I hear, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, well, thank you for having me this morning. Monty and I have been chatting over the past, I don't know, almost six weeks or so about the potential refunding of the county's Series twenty-fourteen A bond. And I understand that the county board is interested in potentially moving forward with that refunding. So what Northland did was put together some options for the county just to see kind of where we're at today and what it would mean to refund those bonds currently, and then what it might mean to leave. So you've got some options in your packet today. I'm just going to kind of scroll along with you, so I believe this starts on page, we thirty-eight, thirty-seven of your packet. So what we did was put together for this refunding summary, the backup to all the numbers that you're seeing within that table are behind there. You do have the schedule, but go along with it. So what we wanted to do is take a look at the first scenario being considered an advanced refunding of the Series twenty-fourteen A bond. So with tax reform, what we used to be able to do with advanced refunding was to take tax exempt debt and refund that ahead of a call date with new tax exempt debt. With tax reform, we're no longer able to do that, but what we're seeing because of the interest rate environment that we're in is that a number of cities and counties are looking to potentially refund current tax exempt debt with taxable debt because that is allowed. And what that means is that you'll pay a little bit of a higher interest rate, but being that raised ourselves a little bit in this case and in our current environment, some taxable refundings are very attractive. So that's what scenario A represents, so again, we've got the series being refunded here of the twenty-fourteen A, the abatement bonds that were issued for around about, I believe. The status of the refunding would be considered an advance and the bond would be issued as taxable bond. If the county board was interested in moving forward quickly, what we would try to do is to get this closed out by the end of the year. So we've got a date of issuance here of twelve fifteen of this year. Our rate assumptions is that rates would stay flat to where they are now and what's included as the refunding summary. So based on that, we've got an estimated par among the bonds of two million, five fifty-five. The average coupon there would be about one point two six percent based on our estimates, which would provide for growth savings of one thirty-three, three sixty-three, and a present value savings of around a hundred and twenty thousand. So what that means is if someone were to write you a check today for the overall savings over the life of the bond, they'd be giving you a check for around a hundred and twenty thousand. And then in the next column, we're showing that the net present value savings is four point seven percent. And why we include that is because typically it's sort of the threshold or the witness test for whether or not you want to move forward with the refunding. You want to see at least three percent savings, that will get you in a good position for savings over on an annual basis, but also cover the cost of issuance, which is of course important, being that the objective here is interest rate savings for the county. Final payment date for the maturity would be two one of twenty thirty, so that would be the same final interest or final payment date that you have currently. So it's supposed to change the structure whatsoever, it would be a mirror image of what you've got today, just a different interest rate. So from there, what we did is we took a look at some sensitivity testing, if you will. So we took the existing bond issue and looked at how much would tax exempt rates have to go up in order to achieve a very similar level of savings? So that's what you're seeing for scenario B there. So again, you've got the fourteen A bond, it would be considered a current refunding if we were to wait until next year. The rule is that you can do a current refunding with tax exempt rates within ninety days of the call date. The fourteen A bonds have a call date of two one of twenty, excuse me, two one of twenty twenty-four.
Oh, we lost her, we lost her. Hang on, Jessica.
Let's see here, what can I do about this? Oh, oh, yeah, we lost her on the phone, okay, hang on. Let's see.
Can you hear her now? Jake, what did she say? And it's three percent? Three percent, yeah. Hang on just a second. I only got, I only got one hearing aid working. So I may be bugging you. That's fine.
That's all right, Jake likes the numbers.
Yeah, I do, he understands the two, yeah. Haven't had a degree in finance, so I love it. Yeah, that's one part of mine, too, but I didn't hear what she said, see. Okay. Okay.
Stay with me, folks.
Can she see us? Could, could you see us, Monty?
Well, she's still talking.
Yeah. She, we missed a lot.
Oh, yeah.
We'll make it work. Let's see here, I sent her a couple of chat messages, so.
We should just go, once she can't see anything. We just have her hang up and start again?
She's going to have to call back into the conference, right?
Can we just cut her off, so you just?
Yeah, for some reason, this phone cracked out, and I'm not sure why, so.
Technology, we need to upgrade.
That's why, yeah.
It could be a probably go-to.
Please enter your access code following by the pound or hash sign.
We've had issues before with the two where it dies on us.
Go-to is overloaded.
Well, that's just it, there's so many users using this technology, it can sometimes only handle so much.
So we'd be paying for that, three up the hill till twenty thirty. Yep.
Jessica, Jessica.
Jessica, that's.
Jessica, this is Monty. I have bad news for you.
Perkins, the old Perkins.
We, we didn't hear.
Oh, that's the old, that old one, oh, yeah, okay.
You're kidding.
We enjoyed, we enjoyed watching you talk, but we couldn't hear you, so.
Well, that, that's nothing.
So I'm very, I'm very sorry, our connection, our audio connection dropped, but you're back with us now, though.
I'm going to tell her where she left off.
Great, and I actually had some, I think trouble earlier, I was hearing Amanda just find and then the rest of her presentation cut out, so I actually signed out, came back in.
Just to start with B again.
Okay.
Start with B again.
Did you hear any of the scenarios?
Yes, we heard A, we only heard A.
Jessica, you were right in the middle of talking about option B.
Right.
The second one.
It's just about certain.
That's the last we heard, when you were talking about options.
Just starting option B.
Okay, great, so, well, just to sort of recap, it's personally happy to jump into any of them. So with option A, what we're showing you is that if you were to refund the bond now, what you'd be seeing is a savings of around a hundred and thirty thousand. With option B, what we're showing is that you could wait until next fall and hold on the bonds when they're considered callable and be able to issue tax exempt debt. And what that would allow for you is to really be in a similar position to where we are now if rates were to increase by up to ninety basis points. With option C, what we're showing is that if rates were to stay very similar to where we are now, we could effectively achieve savings of around two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars or a present value savings of two thirty-three. So the reason that we wanted to do this sort of testing or running these different scenarios is to really just give you all your options. If, if you're in a position where you believe that rates will stay low for the foreseeable future or at least until the point where we can essentially call the bond as a current refunding and issue tax exempt debt, the savings is just so much greater, nearly double where we are today. So when I said this to Monty when we spoke a couple of weeks ago, Northland, of course, is in the business of doing bond deals, so we are certainly happy to move forward if, if the board says, you know what? so we are certainly happy to move forward if, if the board says, you know what, we want to just do this taxable because rates are low now, let's take advantage of that. So we are, of course, seeing some information coming from the Fed saying that the rates are going to stay low even out through twenty twenty-three, and then others, sources such as Bloomberg and senior analysts talking about the fact that they anticipate rates staying low. So with that, just wanted to put all of the options on the table, let you know how much that market could change. So again, up to ninety basis points, and you would effectively be in a very similar position that you are today and be able to issue with tax exempt rates. So hopefully, you caught all of that, but I'm happy to take any questions that you have. We do have all of that backup information behind that refunding summary that you have. But yeah, happy to, happy to talk about the market or expectations or just any questions that you have.
Go ahead.
So, so the Federal Reserve Chair did say he's gonna hold them low for a long time, I did hear that. But what markets are we, is our benchmark, is it, is it the Federal Reserve rate, or is it the free market rate, like a ten-year that, that has gone up the last couple of days and, and depending upon an election, you know, may go up? Whi- which one, which market are we tapping into?
So you'd be looking at the tax exempt market, so oftentimes when we're looking at those benchmarks, of course, we're looking at the federal funds, funds rate, we're looking at treasury rates, just because the tax exempt bond market does not move in lockstep with those markets, but it is certain, those are indicators that we look at. So when we see that the federal funds rate is projected to stay low, and of course, we can't predict what's going to happen, particularly since March, we've seen interest rates behave very differently than they have in the past. So we don't want to certainly tie anything or, you know, hitch our wagon to those things, but we do want to pay attention to them. So if the tax exempt bond market that we're looking at, it's impossible to say what rates are going to do. Obviously, we know that what we're seeing now is our historically low rates to the point where it's rather unbelievable, to be honest. But it's really up to the comfort of the board, if you feel that rates are gonna stay low, certainly, we cannot guarantee that or even suggest what's going to happen. We just want to be aware of the fact that rates could move quite a bit and you'd still be in a very similar position if you wanted to wait until these bonds are considered callable.
So if we, if we roll the dice a little bit and go, take option C, that has potential to save more, so I guess it's, it just gets down to that, if we want, how much risk we want to assume on this on interest rate changes.
But I, I just think, you know, if the economy, if the economy stays, if the economy starts going up, and that's what been hap- it, you know, when they had the COVID, our interest rates were on the rise. With the COVID coming, they stayed the same, so if the economy starts getting better, I think interest rates are gonna come up a little bit, but that's hard to say how long that economy's gonna be that way.
So I always use the Bud Grant theory, so we could, we could wait, don't decide till we have to, we could watch the rates and see what they're trending and, and that, you know, if it starts trending up, inflation starts going up, and depends upon after the election, who gets elected and what the stimulus, you know, the, you know, how much stimulus you're gonna throw at the, if they throw another three trillion at the economy, you're gonna have inflation and higher interest rates, but.
Do you think these interest rates in the economy will be driven by the COVID and the speculation of a vaccine too?
Oh, yeah.
You know?
Affected by all, all the above.
Yeah.
Yeah.
From my insight, from my son, is that even if they have a vaccine, even if they get new leadership and, and the economy turns around, interest rates ain't gonna go anyplace, he don't think, for eighteen to twenty-four months. Because so many, he said he, you see so many businesses that are so far down, they gotta let them, let them get back to, you know, water levels so that they can at least breathe again.
Yeah, so we could, we could postpone our decision and watch, watch the market and be smarter in March than we are now, huh?
Yeah, well, yeah, or, you know, that's the old theory, you take the burden of hand, you know? You got that right here, and I guess.
Yeah, the other part of it, I'm, I'm kinda leaning towards waiting, because the other part of it is, is the commissions, what are the commissions on this, again?
Seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, so seventy thousand a percentage of a hundred and thirty versus seventy thousand a percentage of two forty is, is quite a better return on, return on investment from the fees.
Yeah.
Fee coverage ratio.
So is that kind of a consensus that we have here today is perhaps just delay this a little bit until we get in, probably into next year, and of course, there'll be a new board here then, and you know, I'm, I'm comfortable either way on this, 'cause we can always, nobody's ever gonna fault you for taking a savings now, but if you can make a little bit more later on, it might look like a wise move. So, and I think the wait and see probably is a good, good thing to do.
The other part I look at is that we refinanced once, and we saved a pile of money then, so we're already looking, it already looks pretty good, and if we could top this off with another two hundred and forty thousand, I think we'd really be in good shape.
Yep, depending on what rates do, that, that could cha- that could change quite a bit, yeah. So. I, I think that's a, pretty much a consensus, Jessica, I think that's what seems that way, we just kind of take a little wait and see on this. Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I can.
Oh, okay, good, yeah, we're always wondering about the technology here, yeah, all right. Okay.
Thank you, Jessica, appreciate it.
So we will.
Okay.
Say that again?
No, I think that's all about, that's all our discussion is today, I think that, that's enough on this for now, but we'll probably get in touch with you early next year, probably have to repeat the process again, but hopefully, the things will change in our favor, so things will happen that we can save some more money for the taxpayer in Benton County, so. We appreciate your help.
That sounds good, we will, we will plan to hit pause on this and sort of put it on the shelf, but we will keep an eye on it, so rates are moving and it looks like a better opportunity to move now, we will certainly reach out to Monty, otherwise, we'll kind of put this on the calendar a bit for beginning of next fall to see if we can achieve that level of savings that would be acceptable to the board next November.
Okay, very good, all right, well, thank you again, Jessica, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Answers a lot of our questions, yep.
All right. Now we're going to reconvene the, whoops, we're gonna.
Recce.
Recce, recess the regular board meeting to conduct a human services board meeting and turn it over to Commissioner Peschel.
Can you have it call the human services board to order? Approve to get amended agenda, if anything, Bob?
No changes.
Most approve the agenda, so move. Second?
Second.
Discussion, not all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda, approve the regular minutes of September fifteenth. Motion.
For approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Discussion, not all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Bob?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
First thing I have is to approve changes on the head-up in county metropolitan county consortium contract and cooperation agreement, or cooperative agreement. Basically, we did get some updated rates on that, but they were completely understandable and within reason. And the second thing is, is that they did make some changes to include other counties that joined and then just cleaned up some language, so it really isn't a whole lot of, just updated contract and the rates were bumped a bit, so. I would ask that that be approved.
Can you have any approval of updated changes?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion anymore?
So we, the estimated cost will, we still, still won't know that for a while, or estimated cost of this is still unknown then?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, you've got estimated cost unknown.
Oh, I see, as far as that goes, what, we get charged by a leg, so we never know exactly what that last figure is, is because we just don't know how many rides we're gonna give out.
Okay.
So that's the reason why it's, uh, we don't know.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other discussion, not all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Okay, and the, the second item is the con- twenty twenty contract from the human services department, and that's community support program funds, and this is something that's been going on for quite some time, and the only reason I put it on the regular agenda is because I wanted to make sure that this is something that, Commissioner Peschel, you're gonna have to sign via electronic signature. So I just wanted to let you know that that's, that's a little bit different than what we typically have, but it is certainly the wave of the future, so we can expect that whoever is the human services board chair in the future is gonna have to probably do more of this, so I just thought I'd bring this, nothing different than anything in the past, other than the signature. So I would ask for approval on that.
I'd move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion, if not, all signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carried.
I don't have anything else unless you have questions.
Any questions?
That's for tomorrow.
All righty, thank you.
All right, thanks, I'll turn it back to the Chair.
Okay, we'll reconvene the regular board meeting, and next item we have is Chris Bird, county engineer, County Road Fifty-Five construction discussion, good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, good morning, Commissioners, all right, so let's see if I can bring you a sec, there's me, Spotify. Okay, so I just wanted to have a discussion, just kind of maybe refresh everybody's memory and make sure that we're all on board with the direction that we're proceeding with County Road Fifty-Five construction. Back in February of this year, we had a committee of the whole where we discussed this, this project, and the consensus out of that was that in twenty twenty-one, so this upcoming construction season, we're gonna work on County Road Fifty-Five from one hundred and fifth street, this, this township road. The project limits will go all the way up to Casado, but in this section here, we will do a earth shoulder or shoulder widening project to widen out the driving lanes and put a little bit of a shoulder, and then from this point on into town, we will do a mill and overlay. And, and when I say shoulder widening, at that committee of the whole, we presented a couple of different options, and this is the option that was selected, was to have two eleven-foot driving lanes and a six-foot shoulder. We discussed this about whether to make this a bike lane or not, but the intentions were, the guidance given was that it's not gonna be signed or designated as a bike lane, we're widening that shoulder for our traffic purposes, for the volume of traffic that we have out there. Engineering standards dictate that we have this minimum shoulder width of, of six foot. So that's the direction that we are proceeding under right now, and we're planning for, yeah, twenty twenty-one construction season, hopefully having a bid opening shortly after the beginning of the year, and as soon as the weather allows in the spring, start this construction. We're so far now that we actually have utility relocations occurring. Benton Telephone in the area just last week contacted us and, and we approved the permit for them to start relocating some of their facilities in that area that, that we're widening the shoulder. So everything is progressing, and we should have no problem meeting that timeline. So I just wanted to bring that up for discussion, see if there's any questions about the direction that we're proceeding, and if, if we, if there are changes the board desires, I mean, now's the time to do it. We're gonna, it's not gonna be too long, and we're gonna be too late to, to change things without detrimentally affecting the, the, the work schedule.
I got a question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
So are, are we just going up to the city limits with the widening?
Uh, yes, at thi- at this point, and that was because, uh, well, we may actually go up to, to this point now that I see this, because the discussion revolved around if someday we want to realign County Road Fifty-Five, we didn't want to have an approved road section up to here, stop it here and maybe use this as a possible realignment route of County Road Fifty-Five. So actually, yeah, we were gonna, up to these lagoon ponds, so. And then from this point into Fifty-Five would be a mill and overlay, thank you for pointing that out, that these arrows need to be shifted up to here. So basically, from one hundred and fifth up to, yeah, this, this is probably a quarter, quarter section line where the, that aligns with their pines.
I guess the other thing that I would have suggested that you'd done is maybe have some contact with the city of Rice to see if they were interested in doing anything with that short period, you know, getting them to that development, there's a, a road that goes into the development there, from there, from there to the, to where we're gonna quit.
Would it be this development, or, or is it one of these?
One of them up in there, I believe, I don't think that other one's a development, Chris.
Yeah, I think you're right, this is just a few houses right here.
So I, I was under the assumption, we were, I, I know we talked about in case we reroute it, but I guess I would have a little contact with the city to see if they were interested in doing something from, I, I think you know where it is, where virtually we have these houses that are right along Fifty-Five, and where they end and they started the new development, they have plenty of property there, maybe they would be interested, or maybe we should look at that, I don't know.
Of reconstructing or doing the?
Well, making the shoulder, I mean, that's, that's a pretty important part, if you're gonna get it down to the park.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, okay.
So you're saying widening it all the way?
Well, at least give them an option, because what are you gonna have in there, quarter mile, half a mile? That's gonna be narrow, and then all of a sudden, you're gonna get wide.
Yeah, I agree with that, you know, otherwise bikes can't even get to the wider part.
Right. And I'm more or less looking for the safety part of, of people that go out to the park right now, you know, it's used pretty heavily.
Mr. Chair, I got a question too. Did, did the city of Rice already comment on this?
Um, I don't.
Didn't they comment a part of it, they, they, they didn't wanna do something?
They were more commenting on the trail that they wanted, you know, and.
More worried about the trail than the road, so, so to say, huh?
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Because weren't we?
Yeah.
I got a question, so, I, I agree with Commissioner Pop that we should widen it all the way, and, and the trail, you know, that's a whole different deal, you know, right away, and at least we get a widened shoulder all the way, but the other thing is I'd, I'd ask is why are we milling it? Because it might, you know, just, why not just overlay it, because it's just gonna be kind of a temporary fix anyway. You mean if we're not, if we're not widening it, just mill it? Don't mill it, just overlay and widen and just overlay it.
That, this sales tax money is not.
Oh, correct, yeah, this is sales tax, this was identified in the sales tax resolution.
Not levy money, then.
Uh, correct, yep, other than us, our design costs.
You're talking, what, million and?
So if they, if they follow, follow this.
Million and three, you know, what the heck, you know, like Jake said, which means maybe mill it, just overlay it.
Because we don't know the future of this road, we don't know the future of this road, it might not even be needed, you know.
How far would the widening be anticipated?
Well, we.
Up to just this?
The city, though.
Beginning of the development?
Let the city, by the right of way, if they want it.
Right.
That's what I'm, yeah. Let the city, by the right of way, if they want it widened, they're gonna want it widened, I'll bet you.
Because I believe on one side, you're right, when this was all plotted, there was right-of-way dedication, we could do that. What concerns me is this side, to do the same thing, we would, we would be purchasing right of way from this trucking company here, and they've already got a pretty tight lot.
Just do the one side, then?
Yeah, just do the one side, then.
Only put a shoulder on one side of the road?
Yeah.
At least you got a, you got a temporary, it's, it's a bike path, if you wanna be honest about it, that's what it is. You gotta have some access to the park.
Where does the city limits stop or start?
Uh, right here, and consequently, that's the beginning of our park property, I believe, so, as well. So I do have some engineering concerns with having a shoulder on one side of the road and not the other, and not designating it as a bike lane and, and those kind of things. We're kind of given the impression of a bike lane, but then not signing it as a bike lane. What is that message we're trying to send to the public, that's okay, but we don't wanna, anybody to do it safely, we don't wanna make the motor in public aware that this is a bike lane? If it's a shoulder, it's either say, well, we're, we're providing a traffic safety shoulder, so people can move and they can adjust lanes, as there's, there's other things in the roadway, but by providing a shoulder on the one side of the roadway, that, that sends mixed messages, is it a bike lane or is it for traffic safety? But by providing a shoulder on the one side of the roadway, that, that sends mixed messages. Is it a bike lane or is it for traffic safety?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, so.
So how, how wide does that have to be for a bike lane, six or eight feet?
No, yeah, it needs to be more like eight to ten feet wide.
So I've noticed roads that have a bike lane on one side, two traffic lanes, and then nothing on the other side.
Yeah, and it's probably signed and striped as a bike lane.
Yeah, maybe we should just do that, it's only two more feet.
Is that some, but, uh, is that something that we pay for or do we have the City of Rice pay for? And I thought that was part of the concern too, is that, um, we're, we're gonna do things for our, our, our roadway safety.
Right.
Um.
Yeah, Steve?
So, Chris, this is just my opinion. I'm not willing to buy roadaway, road.
Right of way.
Right of way. You know, from the city, let the city buy that. If they want that widened, let them buy that.
Yep.
And then move forward with it on our end. But if that's not gonna happen, I personally would quit right at, right be, no, keep, keep going. Right there. You know, that's what I, that's where I would quit it then. Cause we don't wanna be buying right-of-way.
But as I understand, they have right-of-way on that one side of the road the rest of the way, right?
Uh, through this, now, now, not all the way up to two, but, so we're still gonna be in a situation where we got this narrow road, then it widens and then, um.
That portion of traffic, Chris, where it gets really narrow there by the railroad tracks, is very slow and I don't think that's a, that's a concern. It's once you get to that development, and I think the city's got the right-of-way there where you're at now.
Just on one side of the road?
Just on one side of the road. Because if you, if you see the development of them houses, they are back off of the road. So I guess I would have the conversation with the city before.
If they wanna buy the right of, right-of-way on your side of the road, fine, but, you know, we're not going to, but.
We're not going to, no.
I have no problem with buying the right-of-way up to the end of that development, but not, not once it gets into that development.
Steve, you got a, you got a comment?
I disagree. If it's in the city limits, the sin, the city should be, I, I've been on the other side.
Yeah, Sock Rapids had to do it.
I've been on the other side of, I know what it's all about. I mean, if, if they want to have this road widened and have it shouldered.
In the city?
In the city limits, it's their responsibility.
Yeah, that's true.
That's true. City Sock Rapids had to do it for the three up the hill.
We, we had to buy more than enough right-of-way, okay?
Just the right of way.
You know, so this is, this is a double standard. If we're, if we did it for one city,
Yep.
we've gotta keep maintaining it for all the other cities in the county.
I would stress that Chris relays that message.
You know, so, and if they're not willing to do that, I'm not willing to widen the ro- you know, do the shouldering and everything then. You know, they have responsibility too.
Yep.
I would support the county doing the, you know, the shoulders, paved shoulders and, and doing the road, but not the right-of-way, I guess, I agree with that.
And we'll do widen as much as we can with the right-of-way and the room we got. We can't widen more than what we got room for, so that's on them.
Correct.
Okay, we're still, we're still gonna, we work to get it to twenty twenty-one. I will, uh, talk to the City of Rice, reach out to them, maybe their city engineer, and then, yeah, start those, uh, conversations. Yeah, we need to be doing that this fall.
Do you wanna condemn the other side and make it symmetrical? That's fine too, but if it's not, I guess I, why are you concerned about one side being paved and not the other?
Well, because if we only do one side, we would need to, I really think we need to stripe it and sign it as a bike lane. And I think that was some of the discussions that we had at that committee of the whole, was that we, we weren't building the bike lanes or trails we, for the, the city. So do we only do that in the city? Um, yeah, there's, by only having that shoulder on one side, i- it, it's gonna function as a bike lane, but we're not taking the full responsibility of it a bike lane, and I think that puts us in a precarious situation. If we have the shoulders, th- then that's a roadway safety, uh, feature, it's not a pedestrian safety feature.
But one, I would argue that one, one widened shoulder is better than no widened shoulders. For the bike, for the, for the people walking and biking.
Have no shoulders, that's more dangerous than having one shoulder.
Oh, we got all kinds of them around. There're people walking all over with no shoulders.
But this, this is high, we gotta, we gotta park out here.
Yeah, I know.
And, 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 and how many cars a day on this road?
Six. We're, yeah, seven hundred, uh, so over seven hundred vehicles a day, which for us, that's a, that's a high-volume roadway, so. You know, I, I don't disagree that, yeah, safety-wise, maybe that's the right thing to do. Is that our position or is that a city thing? Say, okay, we could do this, but city, you're paying for that widening because that's acting as a trail. We're, we're committed to doing things for our, our roadway safety, not for the pedestrian.
Maybe we pay six and they pay the other two, two feet, you know, whatever, yeah.
No. No, make them pay for it.
That's what I'm saying.
Pay for it.
Six-foot shoulder is normal for us.
Right, okay.
If you wanna go eight, they pay the other two.
They pay the other two feet.
We got six-foot shoulders everywhere, I mean.
And typically, but.
This kinda traffic volume, we got six-foot shoulders.
Yes, on both sides of the road.
Right.
So do we do, do we do both sides of the road up here and risk having to condemn a, a tight parcel, uh?
That's their call, that's their call.
Yeah, I don't believe that that's that tight, Chris.
And then if they say no, then do we, we, we back off and we only widen to, to here?
That would be my opinion.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now, Jake, you were talking about, uh, milling overlay and just doing an overlay, an overlay from what part to what part? From what?
The part that's not, not paved now, basically where we left off last time.
Okay.
So, basically what's in the city, right?
Well, so that's what I, what I, what I'm understanding is wherever our widening stops, at that point, board's only wanting to see an overlay up to, uh, the intersection with Kasaa two. If that's, that's from here to here?
Because we.
Or if it's from here to here?
We put a patch on the, the south part of this road last year and it worked just fine. I, we didn't mill that, I don't.
Yeah, we did, we did, we patched up to, to here, yep.
Yeah.
I would just, I would just overlay the rest of it. We, we don't have a heath problem. Look, a lot of times you mill because you have a heath problem right in the center, you know. We don't have a heath problem there.
Is that, is that getting a little clearer now? Millings, millings don't have that value. Millings used to have a lot of value, but now they restrict how much you can put in these mixes and stuff, and everybody's got excess millings. The contractor won't give you any credit back for those millings, what they did five years ago or seven years ago. Cause they could use more of it. Now they can't use, specs change, you can't use as much of it, so.
You're paying a lot of money to get that stuff off there and haul it away. And in the past, we'd always give, we'd get millings credits.
Yeah.
They quit doing that now. There, there's no more millings credits outside that.
We, we are still hearing from some bidders that that, that is valuable to them and that, that can affect the, the unit price. I mean, maybe in the grand scheme, sixty dollars a ton, it affects it to buy a dollar or so, but, but we're hearing that. It's, there's thirty to forty percent, uh, rap allowed in mixes still, though, so.
But you don't have so much nu- you have to have so much new oil.
That's true, yep, you got dead oil, you gotta meet that, so.
You can only put ten or fifteen percent in, cause you have so much new oil.
Okay. We're gonna continue designing our work. Uh, there's conversations I need to have with the City of Rice on widening farther north. And their desire to, uh, purchase right-of-way. And widen on both sides of the road. So, that, I guess I'll just say, is that the cons- consensus? Okay. Very good. Good thing that, that we brought this up, so, um, make sure we're all on the same page.
Alright.
Uh, that's all I had, gentlemen, unless there's anything, any questions?
Alright.
We'll see you later.
Okay, we have, uh, next item we have is Commissioner Meeting Updates. Been three weeks, I suppose some of us had some meetings. That was a nice little, three weeks in between meetings.
I just have, we had a planning commission on the lot with us Thursday, a week ago. Anyway, Tom and, and Kerry. What's his name, Scott? Skapansky was in for a, a pit out there. They had a pit that wasn't, uh, servicing their, amount of animals, so they gotta, they're making a new pit, plus they gotta fill in the old one. Plus they gotta take some of the dirt out of the old one and spread it out in the field. Because it was earth pit and not a cement pit.
Okay.
And then, uh, putting in a stack and slab besides, so they can control their manure better, I guess.
They what?
Can control their manure as long, as storage longer, you know. And that's kinda typical nowadays, you know. I don't know if that's scheduled for this fall yet or not, I don't think so, right? I think next year. So that's all we had in the planning commission.
Mr. Chair, I had two meetings, uh, one you'll talk about, of course, the career solutions because you like that. The second one was the ESB board. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about the nine-one-one outage, uh, with Century Link, Century Link. Century Link threw it on all the other, uh, little, uh, communication stuff. And they wanted to stress that, even in our website, we should be, uh, making sure that all of our ten-digit numbers are for the, uh, fleet, the, fire departments, fully Sock Rapids, and the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. So that everybody knows the secondary number in case nine-one-one fails again. And they did said, they did say, yes, it's all computer-related, so it will fail again sooner or later. So just get out the info of the, uh, secondary numbers to reach everybody. Thank you. Yes, correct, yep. And they also said that it's happened now and it will happen again. It gives us all on computer.
Well, I'll, I'll go next, as long as you said career solutions. Before I forget all of what I was gonna say. But we had a special meeting at Career Solutions to okay a contract for Stearns County to give some CARES money to Career Solutions for some services they provide in the job training area. And it would go to several different groups. Tammy was here yesterday and where they would focus on, that, on, uh, additional job training over and above what we're doing now, from what I understand. Couple of questions came up during that. One was Steve brought up that is it appropriate for us in a joint powers agreement to be voting on allocating CARES funding from another county? And I, we kinda made the decision that because of the emergency powers and the executive order that we have, we're operating under that. And we decided we could vote for it and, and personally, I did not wanna deny anybody any funds to, if it's gonna help them get a job, and so that was part of mine. So I'm, that was kinda what we hung our hat on, but that also brought up the question is, does the same need exist on the other side of the river? So some CARES Act funding, if that's available, serving the same type of population. And we're gonna be talking about that more tomorrow, so should we have an allocation here to rather ki- kinda duplicate that? Cause then they could do it for both residents of both counties, of which we are a joint powers board. So, that's what we're gonna be discussing a little bit more tomorrow. I know it's a, it's, it might be a little confusing, but it was supposed to be a quick, easy meeting, but it turned out to be quite long with that discussion we had. And we did call Bob at Tammy Berry here yesterday and, uh, from Career Solutions going over it. So I, I'm hoping we can discuss this a little bit more tomorrow.
On the agenda, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chair, if I might, may add. Uh, in the discussions and everything, everything keeps falling back on the east side of St. Cloud. Everything's falling back, even on committees I serve on too, everything's following back on the east side. What's happening with the east side, you know? We're, we're in a bad situation actually, you know? Cause everyone still thinks that's kinda Stearns County, the regular residents, you know, they don't realize it's Benton County.
Yeah.
So, we got, kinda got that thrown at us too, at that meeting.
Yeah, we could get the city involved in that, that's, you know, that's their economic, HRA, whatever, but, yeah.
Yeah, and there, there is some county involvement on that because there was an allocation of money made through TRICAP for the homeless population over there. And there were what, they gave them, there's some, I wrote down here that there's four specific housing programs for homelessness that was allocated and all went to the east side. And I think yesterday, the, uh, sergeant from St. Cloud PD made the comment that they had vouchers then for what, seventy-five people, was it? But because they had vouchers available, they had a waiting list of a hundred and fifty. Is that correct? I hear that right? So, the issue is pretty big and he, and he did tell us about all the other problems that come down and affect our Human Services Department, so it, it, it all has to do, we're gonna have to work real close with the city and with the county on, on this and, uh, make sure it doesn't, hopefully doesn't get out of hand on us. Cause it's, it's getting, it's just not getting any smaller, I guess, that was, that was the issue. But when TRICAP came up, and that's the board that Warren and I serve on, so. And that came up, I had it written down on my notes from the meeting on nine, nine seventeen. Yep, and then I didn't, my other notes I had was, yeah, emergency shelter, the hotel project, that was what it was. Okay, any, anybody go to the fall conference, any of those things? In general government, I think a big takeaway there, the one that got the most consensus, the most talk was just to preserve county program aid.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, that was foremost amongst all the commissioners there. And, uh, we'll be hearing more about that. We have a district meeting coming up the end of the month, right? Monte, a district meeting coming up the end of the month?
Twenty-six.
Yep, okay. And I think there'll be a lot of discussion on that. And really, that's about all I got. We had listened to the presentation again on the opening session, Frank, Steve Simon was part of it. I thought I had most of my questions answered and then a whole bunch more came up. I had, I've had more people ask me questions about this election, and I don't know if, I could, I didn't know there was, they're all confused about everything, where to go, where to go. One person says, can I go up to Mississippi Heights, ask for a vote, cause they got early voting, can I go up there now and vote? You know, so those are the types of things that, I'm getting all sorts of things, you know, butt mail and stuff. Yeah, so, I don't know if anyone else is. But, uh, and MICA, I think that was right after the first day of the session, so we didn't really get much out of that meeting.
No.
As far as I'm concerned, yeah. And I don't know that, that, that session, it looks like the bonding is probably gonna have to wait another month if they do something, because that, unless, unless the special session was extended to go into the next time period, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that was what I understood from Steve on that, so, that's all I have. Jake?
We had a BEP meeting, talked about CARES Act a lot, she kinda covered that. And our airport meeting yesterday was canceled. Let's move ahead kinda slow because COVID thing, but, um, and the city's financial, um, challenges, city St. Cloud's financial challenges, but, um, I've got another thing I'll bring up in Commissioner Concerns, but that's all I have.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Uh, Commissioner Bowerly, uh, I did get a email or, no, a text from, uh, Mayor Hunstinger wondering when they were gonna start meeting. Do you have a idea or update on that?
Um, it keeps getting postponed.
Okay.
Um, probably won't be any major meetings till next year.
Okay, and that's, I kinda told him that because of the COVID and everything.
It costs about three or four hundred thousand to go through this process for the city and they don't, you know, have the money and they wanna put, it don't happen this year's budget, I guess they're gonna be. So it'll be late this year, or first part of next year, before we ever start getting together.
Okay, thank you.
Well, um, on the fifteenth, we, that evening, we had a library meeting and we had some trouble, I had some trouble getting on. Um, there were, Benton Communication was doing some work and I had no internet for a while. So I finally, finally got on at the end and they did approve a library, the lease for the library.
Finally.
Finally, uh, for, till twenty twenty-eight, I think is what they got. Um, you know, and I have to commend, uh, Commissioner Wincher from Morrison County because I think when he went to speak with the mayor and he kinda, you know, he's pretty blunt, lays it on the line, tells it how it is. You know, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna do that, then we sent him a proposal and we did a few minor changes, you know. One of the, when we had the meeting for the, for the lease, um, uh, Wincher's comment was, well, we throw him a bone, they might accept it. And, and actually, that's what they did. Yeah, they accept, so it's a pretty good lea- you know, the biggest hang-up was that, um, that belt, you know, with the books. That's, the maintenance is so high on that. And, uh, they agreed to, to pick up the maintenance at seventy, eighty percent. And they agreed to, to pick up the maintenance at seventy, eighty percent of the cost for a number of years. I, I mean, I was pretty, pretty, I, I guess I'm surprised that they accepted. Um, and then they, they started the process to look for a new finance director who resigned after some internal stuff, I guess, went on or whatever. And then like Spencer said, we had a B E P meeting, or AMC meeting, which not much happened. Um, we had a park board meeting on the twenty-first. Um, that was a good meeting, I thought. They kind of rearranged their priorities a little bit. According to the website, we have regional designation, but we never got official notice, right?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, so it's listed as a regional park, but it, we haven't got official notice. And that'll open up some grant money, um, once we get regional deal. And then the other part is that Sherburne, or Sterns County put the purchase of that land on hold right now. So, and I know it's on the market, that private sector, so I don't think that they can hang on, you know? May go for development or something like that, so, yeah.
So how does that affect, you're saying that on the website, it's regional, but we haven't got notification from the state that it's regional? And if they don't, Sterns doesn't get that land, what, does that have any effect on this?
I, I don't think so. No, I, I don't think their decision to delay that affects the regional designation.
No.
Okay.
I, I just, for some reason, we haven't received a formal letter. And I, and I, I talked to the Sterns County Park Commission person about a week ago. She thinks they got it. And it kind of makes sense, they would have gotten it because they didn't, they were the applicant. So I'll follow up and, and get this somehow, so.
But we are listed as a regional designation, so that part.
I'll probably contact the commission directly and see if they can send me. Because on paper, actually Sterns was the applicant for regional designation on our behalf.
Right.
So.
And then we had a, we had a request to have, um, an outdoor movie night down at Benton Beach. And they pretty much denied that because, you know, there's too many complications that go with that.
Beer drinker.
And then, you know, who's gonna clean up? Who's gonna do what, you know? This park board is smart enough to see through some of that stuff. And then we had a, a one river, or one water, one plan for that Rum River, and this is not going anywhere. We are the most undecided, you know? Morrison County never got their, their stuff together. And so they couldn't, whether to have a collaborative or an entity. And we have the push from one of the counties, they want it to be an entity no matter what. And one of the commissioners is calling everybody to push it through. And so, and it has to be a two-thirds majority. So the entity lost on a six-five vote. And some are not happy and so we're waiting. And my theory was if Morrison County didn't get to it yet to decide which way they want to go, I'm gonna stick with what I wanted. And I wanted a collaborative. I would have voted for an entity, um, had it, you know, had Morrison County got theirs done. So Aiken County is definitely wants an entity, Lax County wants an entity. But a couple of the southern counties, they want a collaborative. And what a collaborative does, it gives the appointed board the authority to spend money wherever they want.
Yeah.
Without, you know, consulting some of the other people involved. So, um, you know, I don't know, I, I think it's tied up forever. I don't, I don't foresee anybody moving. And, and, and the part is that the county that's trying to control it is such a small part. But they're the administrative county and they're collecting the money for the administrative stuff. And people quit and I don't know, I don't know where it's gonna go. We're gonna meet again on the, on the twenty-fourth or something of October and see if we can hash it out again. But yeah, I mean, I, I really thought we could get the, the Sartell, Mississippi one going, but jeez, I don't know. You know, you hear negative things from other counties than that one already. And we got three, four of the counties are involved in this one that'll be involved in that one. So, and that was all that I had. I mean, they, you know, I don't know, that one's a tough one to deal. Supposed to be an hour and it ends up two hours.
Nothing gets it done, then?
Yeah, they can't get anything done.
All right. Is that it? Does that take care of the meeting updates? Okay, uh, Jake, you said you had a commissioner?
Commissioner Concerns, I had a constituent stuff at my house yesterday with concerns about Raleigh's. On Sunday, there's a car show there. Parking lot was packed. I tried to explain to him that the parking lot was packed. He said the parking lot was packed and there was cars all the way down the road and across, across the street and the grass parking lot. I said, well, it is, it was a car show, so the parking lot was taken up by the car show. But he thinks, uh, we should do something about enforcing the state mandates. Now, my question to this group is what, what is our authority to enforce that? Or is that a state enforcement or is that a county enforcement or?
Who, I think, who enforces the governor's order on local businesses?
That would be the sheriff's office and county attorney's office.
So I guess, you know, what do we, do we ask the county sheriff to get involved in reinforcing, reinforcing the governor's orders or what?
Is it a one-time deal or is it all the time? You know, if it's a one-time deal, I would.
Yeah. He talked about they had a concert here a couple of weeks ago and then it was, you know, it's kind of the same thing there. But yeah, it's a, it's a touchy deal because the business is trying to survive and
Jeez, businesses win.
And, and trying to get economic development and we're, you know. I guess I just want to get some direction from you guys of what, kind of what consensus is about, oh, we should.
Well, I'm sure they're.
Sign the sheriff on it or what?
Well, I think they do anyway. I think they watch that fairly closely.
I, I think too, what Sheriff Heck told us a while ago is that they would enforce it when people call to him or call into their department about a complaint. And then they would go out there and
So I should refer them to the sheriff then, basically?
Yeah, they make the call.
Have that person contact the sheriff's office.
Yeah, they did that early in the pandemic too, with some places opening up early and I know they did, they made some calls.
Yeah, okay. I, I would feel better if, if the person, the complaint, complaintee would call the sheriff's department versus us trying to dictate what to do.
Yeah, that's another elected official. We don't, you know, that, that, that call has to be made to that elected official.
Yeah, right, thanks.
Okay, very good. Uh, we got some committees of the whole set up? Go ahead.
We do. Uh, let's start, uh, we would like to have a discussion with you about employee health insurance. As I make, I think I gave you a preview a while back, uh, things have gotten more complicated this year. And reinsurance is certainly part of that discussion. We would like to invite you to have a discussion with the broker, Marsh McLennan, Tim Hanson specifically, about some options, some funding options and so on. And hopefully, uh, you all can reach a consensus on what you think the, the renewal increase should be for next year. So Tim offers his week of October nineteenth is open. Uh, how's your calendars look for the week of October ninth for, for a, a meeting with Tim?
Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Yep.
Monday, okay, yep. What time? Nine? He probably will participate virtually, but, uh, so the nineteenth at nine. I know they, I believe they're taking the reinsurance out to bid, so hopefully he'll have some information for you then on, on the results of that bidding. And again, just some funding ideas and options. Help us hopefully bring that increase down. Okay, um, did anyone attend the Transportation Alliance Forum October first? Did anyone, did anyone tune into that? No, so we'll set that one aside. The next one we have is the AMC District Five meeting. That's October twenty-sixth from nine to eleven-thirty and it will be an online meeting. So as soon as we see any kind of a registration of links, we'll get that too. They typically use Zoom for their stuff. So again, October twenty-sixth, nine to eleven-thirty, and that'll be an online District Five meeting.
Will we be holding that here then?
Yeah.
In person like we did, uh, the last meeting?
That's totally up to you. If, if you want to be here and, and
Yeah, I just.
Excuse me.
I think we get a little better consensus of what.
Yes, we do.
You can see the body language and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, then you can, we can have it up on the big screen. And audio will be, just pretty much like this, except it'll be Zoom instead of GoTo. So that'll be here. Um, yep, that sounds great.
And they can worry about the technology, we don't have to.
That's right.
Yeah. Even better, yeah. Okay.
And, oh, I'm sorry, uh, the B E P quarterly meeting, that is October twenty-second at seven-thirty. Correct if I'm wrong, Vicky, seven-thirty.
Yeah.
Stock Rapids Government Center Community Room, yep, yep. You know, I know.
Seven o'clock is the kind of the networking thing at seven.
So networking at seven and then meeting begin at seven-thirty, thanks.
And then box meals.
Yeah. You know, there will be a virtual option if you choose that. We're, they'll make GoToMeeting available if you wanna, and King Banyon is gonna be the, the speaker that morning, so. I know they, they put some capacity limits on that room. I think it's forty-four. So Amanda's gonna have to kind of finesse that to make sure we don't go over that limit, so. Vicky, anything I missed? That's all we have.
Motion to set the cows.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion and a second. Set the committees of the hold. More discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whoa, one more?
You can go ahead and vote, but I have one more thing for you.
Oh, okay. More discussion? All others in favor of saying aye? Aye, pause, cows are set. Now what?
I'm sorry, just one thing. It's kind of, kind of like a, I guess, is Jenny Colton, who's the, the CARE Board Chair, wanted to ask if any board members would be willing to appear in a promotional video for the CARE program. So there, again, it's just her promotional videos. And she just hoping that there would be a board member who'd want to appear on camera to talk about the value of CARE, CARES programs and services, its mission and so on and so forth. Do we have any volunteers who would be willing to appear in a promotional video for CARE?
I guess I will, if nobody else will, but.
Anybody?
She, she didn't say how many, but one, one, one works. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll let Jenny know. I'll connect you guys to. Yeah, thank you. That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. All right, now, this time.
Take a break or not?
Yeah, let's, we'll take, just take a five, five second, well, not five second.
Five minutes. You know, they, they, they got their own like communications video production company, so they, they do professional, really professional stuff, so.
They, I gave them some years back, all the, my kids when they were babies and young, they had them on the old V H S.
Oh, and they converted for you?
They converted for me.
Yeah. That's neat to keep those, cause, cause right, it's like no one has an old V H S
Right.
tape player anymore, so if you got them on DVD.
But that's what we did back then, the big honkin' camera.
I know. I mean, it's gonna reach a point where people only have DVD players, you know, so better keep one around, I guess.
I actually have like fifty, sixty old Disney movies on V H S.
Oh, I'm sure lots of you have boxes of these things at home.
I'm not willing to give them up.
Oh, we, we had them too?
Christmas, I couldn't even find a V H S player yet.
Yeah.
Somebody told me like around Christmas time, usually you can't find them. I'm gonna just get these ready. I haven't closed the door yet, but I'll get them ready.
Cause they need to do the motion and go on close session first, yeah.
And then I'll need to get the recorded one.
Okay.
I can see that already, yeah. Yeah, it's pretty incredible though, the, all the money is.
Maybe you can see why I haven't given you a summary of the County Road Fifty-Five project.
Cause you didn't know.
Yeah, so I got a little new guidance now, so.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad it was discussed today. Yeah. So I'll. Well, that'd be nice if the city would be willing to purchase right away, cause then that, maybe that then takes care of this trail issue.
Yeah.
You know, at least for now, uh, I guess a widened acceptable shoulder is better than, than no trail, so, you know.
Then they're a partner to the project instead of us just doing it for them.
Money, you're gonna be a lot more feasible.
To be continued. That's right.
I don't know where she was last time.
Let's see, so I'm gonna go ahead.
I suppose, yeah.
Just too new she did.
Maybe, oh, Michelle said no?
I actually have time to make copies.
Oh, you did, great.
Look at the pride of the beach.
Good, that would work only go up to.
She does have a kid that was just Saint John's.
Oh, and the County Road Fifty-Five, okay, yeah, you're right. I get off of that. I, I knew there'd be a lot of businesses wanting to sign it. Let's see, let's get the live stream. A lot of.
I guess I was surprised they would overdo it.
Warren, when you get that, you're gonna get that what Bob talked about, that contract?
It's a good thing. It's a good thing.
There's a private.
We may get, we may get, I don't know.
How, how can we get a handle on the, on the townships?
I, I don't know, but what I did was Emily.
You know, here's what I'm doing, right? I'll, you know, I'll, can I ask me, how's it going?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if you got any leftover.
If you have any questions.
I'll say nicely, it should come back to the county.
Emily.
I imagine we probably could find a way to use it. Right now.
As I told her the first time, you may have some questions.
I'll do that. I'll, I'll shoot them all an email and ask them how it's going.
Just call her and she'll walk you through it.
Oh, okay. I should probably include the cities in that too, asking how they're doing, you know, Stock Rapids and Foley with the convention.
I'm gonna need to use my GoToMeeting account for this next part.
Oh, okay.
Can we shut this one off?
Sure. So you, you have, um.
I have my own login.
You got your own login?
Yep.
Great. So let's do this, this probably when I open this up, it's gonna automatically open up a meeting. So here's what we're gonna do. So I'll log out.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you didn't, it wasn't gonna mess anything up here.
Right, oops, no, no. So now you can log in yourself here.
So what about this?
I'm gonna shut it off. Yeah, I don't think I'm gonna livestream this.
No, no.
Unless you guys want to livestream it, I don't know.
I did my teeth, Lorne, I, I, I was a kid. My dad opened the trunk, he had six or nine dollar spring springs on them. Oh. I, I hit, shipped another and then tried to put a bridge in there.
Bird season is over, is it ready?
Ten dollars.
No. Second week.
How long was that?
Like a week.
Year, two years ago?
Okay.
I had all four Whistons pulled at the same time, they used to come a few years ago. Pulled it one time.
I'm, I'm shutting it off. She didn't sort of formally.
I don't remember anymore.
She just wanted to let you know it's still.
It wasn't, it wasn't that much.
Yeah, I know.
It wasn't that much.
He was calling you.
At all once, that's why I didn't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So as soon as they make the motion to go on close session. Yeah.
But you can't walk around.
Yep, I'm gonna give them to the board and.
Brook Road.
Yep.
Got the hockey player.
Yeah. So Johanna? If you're doing the GoTo, then you need, then you got to have the.
At the down.
Get it down. Okay. You do it. You got that part down, okay.
Yeah, I've got the phone number.
This is for tomorrow's call.
Oh, thanks, Vicky.
Yeah, this is from Michelle for tomorrow's call on the road. I just don't want to miss you in case you guys sneak up.
That'll work better, thank you, yeah. My mind.
Hey, everybody back. At this time, we have to what, to need a motion to go to close session? Uh, yes, we do need a motion to go into, well, first of all, we have to, uh, do we have to do some of those things first? In, in introducing this subject, we have to identify if we're gonna close a meeting, prior to closing the meeting, do we have, have to identify the individual?
Yes, so the records should show that, that the purpose of the, the close sessions is evaluate the performance of, of the county administrator, me. So that should be in the record. And it, you also should, the record should note that the statute that you're using to close a close session. And Vicky, of course, will include that in, in the minutes, that shows it cites the proper statute.
Okay, so what we, what we do need is.
And just, just as, as always with all virtual close sessions, this is recorded and we have to preserve the tape for three years, so. Yeah.
Okay.
No, I'll let you know.
All right, so then what we do need.
Okay. So links, we're gonna, I'm gonna shut, so you, 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 once you make your, make your motion and vote and I'll shut the live stream on.
What we do need to do right now is make a motion to close, to conduct the close session.
What we do need to do right now is make a motion to close, to conduct the closed session, County Board, Minnesota Statutes thirteen D point zero five seven three to evaluate the performance of the county administrator, Mark Higginson. And so we need.
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to do that, then we have a second. Any more discussion? Not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion's carried. We are now in closed session. So we have to, we have to get the recording off you.